To the November 6th. Meeting of the San Luis Obispo County Flood Control and Water Conservation District Water Resources Advisory Committee. So we'll do introductions and welcome first, Tom Burhan, District 4.
Brendan Clark, County Public Works Committee Secretary. I normally go last.
Style County Public Works.
Lauren Dana, Upper Salinas, Los Tablos Resource Conservation District.
Hallie Richard, Coastal San Luis Resource Conservation District.
Jim Betray, City of Roy Bronde.
Tony Rock, Coastal San Luis.
DeMolholland Environmental Lab Large.
The Nortropine Environmental Club.
David Green Environmental Club.
Ed Yvonne of CSD.
David Greer, District 11.
I'm the Borough of Barren, the city of Royal Bay.
Amy Hendrickson of the Water Company.
Carl Morbo, Jacksonville State Council.
Steve Simmons, San Juan Water District.
Steve Carter, County Public Works.
Nina Ziff, City of Music.
Nancy Catherine, Agribusiness.
Murray Cutl, Justin Newell, Southern Republican Member of the Republic.
Greg Raywell, County Land Association for Spokane.
Now a member of District 5.
Tim Walters, Developmental Water.
Callie Boram, RCG.
Jim Green, Community Services District.
John Witsbad, Ag at Large.
Josh World Porter, County Public Works.
And Stan in the back.
Hi, Seth Walp, Land Conservation.
And Clint Williams.
Welcome everyone. Our second item of business is approval of the rack meeting minutes from October 2nd. Well, I will entertain a motion for approval or modification or any discussion. Christine?
I have no amendments to offer if there are none. I move that as a present.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed or extensions?
Who was the second? I got Ed. Jimmy? Or were you abstaining?
July meeting?
October meeting.
Okay, no worries. Thank you.
All right, so we're on item number three, which is receive a presentation from the Coastal San Luis and Upper Salinas, Los Tablos RCDs regarding the mobile irrigation labs.
Testing.
Should be.
There are ways around things too. I have a laser at work, so it's pretty fun. Hi y'all, I am Lauren. This is Hallie, and we're here to speak on the county mobile irrigation lab. And. From the.
Sorry. Yeah. Go ahead. So who do you think we do?
Oops.
Joey O'Neil.
Yeah.
I'm from the Upper Salinas, Los Tablos Resource Conservation District, and I am our program manager.
And I'm with the Coastal San Luis Resource Conservation District, also program manager. Yeah. So how many of us in the room today are familiar with what resource conservation districts? Hopefully by the end of this, everyone will be able to raise their hands. Um, so resource conservation districts are kind of this unusual entity. We're special districts under the California Public Resources Code, so that means we're not quite a government agency. We're not also not a nonprofit, but we kind of have elements of both of those. We're a non-regulatory entity, which means that we're, well, so we're non-regulatory, but we're here to provide technical assistance. So we don't ever tell people what to do or how to do it. We just kind of offer our assistance recommendations. And. And we are, we have a board of directors. So we're accountable to that board of directors. And we're grant funded, though a lot of other are, so there's RCDs, Resource Conservation Districts in every county about in the state and many other similar districts across the country. And some of those have tax bases from their counties or from their state. Legislature, but these are two particular RCDs are, we just get grants. And so like this program through Slow County has funded us to do this work for about 15 years. Our San Luis Obispo County is split in half into RCDs, the Coastal San Luis Resource Conservation Districts and Upper Salinas. And so today, talking about this program specifically, about 15 years ago, this group advocated, so 15 years ago, right, we were in a drought. It's a little bit of a different feeling than we have today. But so this group advocated for your resource conservation districts to receive funding from Slow County to be able to work with our farmers and ranchers across the county to increase irrigation water use efficiently. And so since then, since so Upper Salinas has gotten funding for a little bit longer than we have, I think. But for about 15 years, we've completed a total of 300 irrigation evaluations across the county. And so now as we're kind of moving out of like this drought mentality into more understanding this is drought and dilute. Conditions. We've been able to kind of adapt this program from just focusing on providing irrigation evaluations to looking at a more kind of holistic. Taking a more holistic view of irrigation systems and farmer systems. You know, comprehensively, so that includes like looking at. Not just water conservation, but like a more nuanced assessment of what happens with water resources in general on a farmer scale. And so and really making kind of site specific. So it's not like a prescribed evaluation. We talk to the ranchers and the farmers and, you know. Kind of adapt our these evaluations to meet their needs. And so that's just kind of this one individual program, but more broadly, the breadth of what the RCDs do is really kind of staggering in my unbiased opinion. From, and it varies a lot too, from year to year. So the RCDs have been in place since the 1950s in the county. And so year to year, decade to decade, our programs and our work is really a direct reflection of what our farmers and ranchers and general land manager community needs. It's also a reflection of what public funding priorities are at the time. Yeah, and so Lauren's going to get a little bit more into the weeds about specifically the breadth of the work that we do.
Yeah, so also if I'm not speaking loud enough, please let me know. My voice tends to shrink in volume as I continue to talk. But as Hallie said, we have a swath of programs that we do. And so just to try and give you a little insight to what that is. I've included this overview right here. And we've tried to divvy up our programs into four pillars. So we have our ag and conservation education pillar. And I know Brendan wanted us to even talk about some of the programs that we do, so I'll share a few within each. So under ag and conservation education, we have our Cow Polling CSA program that we are currently working on. And that is a program with Cow Polling, and it allows us to go out to landowner sites and either administer and implement some sort of climate smart agricultural practices. And then the cow polli professors come in and they do some research. And hopefully they're going to create a big report down the road that can tell us a little bit more about what these practices do. Another one that's kind of in between these two is our, which you guys might have as well, is the WCB Pollinator Grant. And for that one, we have the ability to again go out to a landowner's site and implement a pollinator habitat. That could be for the benefit of I, it could be just for the straight benefit of pollinators, or it could be for some sort of wildlife management benefit as well. And then moving into land management, so that's another pillar, and then I should know, all these are like programs, but within those, we also have more projects. So we tried to consolidate it all, but it's really hard to. So under land management, a project that comes to mind is our CFA CAPG grant. So that is a grant funded by California Department of Food and Agriculture. And with that one, we are, we go out to a landowner's site and. We assess it to, we assess their land, but we also assess what practices could they do or could they implement that would then lead to either greenhouse gas reductions or carbon sequestration benefits. And then we move into water resource management, and here we have, you can see watershed management and planning. So there's some like creek restoration that takes place there on a few of our projects. And then down here highlighted in red is the agricultural irrigation system evaluations, which is our MIO of irrigation lab program we talked about today. And then last is regulatory assistance, which everyone loves permitting, all the good stuff. And so, yeah, we do do permitting. A specific one is our alternative review program, and that is permitting around breeding. So lots of erosion impacts, best management practices, all that good stuff. And. Again, like I said, though, we're here today to talk about the agricultural irrigation system evaluations. You will hear us say mobile irrigation lab, we might say MIO, we might say irrigation evaluation, those all are one and the same. So I apologize if it gets confusing. I'm not going to go over the program process right here. I'm going to go over that. We're going to talk about it later, so I don't want to be redundant. But it is important that I include, so you see ITRC protocol here, and there's a little cow poly image here. So ITRC is the Irrigation Training and Research Center at Cow Polling. There are some really great folks over there that are super educated on this stuff, and they do it every single day, and they offer a handful of different trainings. And we've been fortunate enough to attend one of their training that has been rooted, the protocol that we follow, and has really based out this program for us. And so I just think it's important to let you all know that we're not just like, oh, let's do this, you know, irrigation evaluation, and it's definitely, it's rooted in a training that is put on, and everyone follows it that does these. And then there's nuances to it as well and little things we can add in, but that's our basis.
Try again. Too much lasering, maybe.
No, laser's working.
All right, here you go.
Wait, oh, maybe am I pressing the wrong direction? No.
Yeah, okay, cool. So you can see on the map, this is our London County. Just to give you an idea of the, where the distinction between the two districts lies, the Coastal San Luis Conservation District. We cover the coastal watersheds from Laurel Bay down to Osaplacó. Sometimes we dabble in Santa Maria. And so that includes the agricultural centers of Endo Valley, the Los Osos Valley, and the Sianica Valley, like, you know. And so that's where a lot of our work, specifically about the mobile irrigation lab, but. Historically, when we first became a district, we were the Roy Bronde Soil and Water Conservation District, so that's where we've worked for the majority of our time. And then the rest of the district, it's interesting to note that the Upper Salinas District is about three times the size of the Coastal District. You guys have a lot more work to do.
Um, yeah, and so as you can see, we've got these very different districts, and within there, we've got different topographies, different climates, different environments, which lends itself to having different types of crops for different evaluations. I guess oddly enough, though, after saying that, we really only see three primary types of evaluations that we deal with, and those are vineyards, row crops, and avocados. We really, Upper Salinas, we are primarily vineyards. We do some avocados, but it's majorly vineyards. And then with that, we have different system types. So at the ITRC training, they train us on various systems. We, we are trained on separate pivots, sprinkler systems, on emitters. Obviously, a lot of those you don't need here in San Luis Obispo, so we really only have had to evaluate two types of systems, drip emitters and inline emitters. And so kind of going along with that, that brings us into the actual evaluation process. How many of you are familiar with the term distribution uniformity or DU? So cool.
Great.
So. A lot of times, people want, or growers want, a mobile irrigation lab, irrigation evaluation done, so they can achieve this thing called a DU calculation. DU stands for distribution uniformity, and it is essentially kind of like a rating that a grower can receive on their irrigation system. So if you think about it, distribution uniformity, it's rating how the, how uniformly the water is distributed in an irrigation system. And that can be really helpful and useful, because if you think about it, there's orchards, and there could be a tree on this end getting zero water, and a tree on this end getting all the water. That could be a big issue, but if you've got a really big orchard and you're not checking that constantly, you don't know that, and then you've got a root that's not getting any water in the root, and you can, you can understand the issues that would arise. And so us going out there and evaluating the systems can help illuminate some of those issues that occur, or help them just have a little more information on what's going on in their system. So our evaluation process, it starts with a pre-evaluation discussion, which even before that, we got contact with the grower. Many times growers actually reach out to us because they need a DU or an irrigation evaluation done for them. I don't know, I'm going to assume some of you are familiar with the SIP certification, it's sustainable in practice certification, and wine growers, a lot of wine growers want to have that certification. But the standard of it is you have to have your DU calculation done. And so they'll come to us and they'll say, hey, I need this. This is great, we got you. And so we have this discussion with them. It's basically like, you know, the basics, what's, what's your property? Where is, what are you growing? Why do you need this for? Is there anything we should be aware of, anything that shouldn't be aware of? And, and then from there, you know, we agreed to move forward. And we decide, okay, well, looking at a map, what block are we going to evaluate? We only evaluate one block. We'd love to, I don't know if we'd love to, but we'd love to be able to do your whole, whole property, but that would take way too long. And so we do do one block, and once we get a map of that, or we go on Google Earth ourselves, we map out where are we going to do this? So through the ITRC training and what we now do in all of our evaluations is we pick three locations that we are going to evaluate within that single block. There is a location A, a location B, and a location C. Location A, which I can go to the next slide, great. Location A right here, this is, this is the entire property. This is the single block that we've decided we are going to evaluate. Location A is right here. Location A has to be the closest to the pump. There's location B, which I'm going to skip over for right now, and we go to location C, which is the dirtiest location is what they call it, so the one furthest, furthest away from the pump. Maybe it accumulates a lot of debris, maybe there's plugging and it happens down there, but that's location C, and location B needs to fall in between the two somewhere in the middle. And so going back to this, once we've decided those locations, we also usually know we have to take two pressures at each location, one at the head and one at the tail of the evaluation's site or location as well. And so we decided this, and we go out to meet the grower, and we're out there. We do kind of a site tour a little bit. We usually go and try and see the pump house. If there's anything else important that they want us to be aware of, we have them point that out to us. We're also, you know, trying to scan and observe in case there is anything that comes up when we have the grower. And then we go into data collection. And so down here, I tried to include a photo. We, we don't always capture a photo when we're actually gathering the data. But what that looks like, so this, this could be site A, and there, we pick an area that has 16 emitters. So at each stock of the vine, they usually have an emitter somewhere around each one or designated to each stock. And so we set down a little container, as you can see down here, right next to each emitter, and then we've got our timers out, we have a few different tools, and. We already said go, and we have a certain sequence so that each bucket, if you will, each bucket is under the emitter for the same example time. And then it's usually under there for three to five minutes. We pull it, and then we put each one individually into a graduated cylinder, and we write that down. I don't know if you guys, if anyone got, packed it up, one of the actual reports, where they, back to everyone. Yeah, so if any, yeah, great, yeah, on, on one of those pages, you'll be able to see all the data that we write down from each individual emitter. And then once we've gathered all of them, well, we gather all of them, but as we're going between emitters, we're also looking and observing the entire time. So do we, do we hear any leaking? Do we see any leaking? Are the emitters oriented correctly? Sometimes there's drip lines and they, the ends are completely off and there's leaking water. So trying to know all these things, some of it we can fix. If it's like, if it's a hole, we can usually plug it. If it's a broken emitter, we can fix it, but some of it we can't. So we're trying to always scan and observe, so the grower, the irrigation manager is aware of that as well. Once we finished up, we, or I go back to the office, and it's kind of time to data crunch. So I've included here an equation, it might be hard to see, but it's called the DU lowest quarter, and that's essentially what will give us the DU number that we need. So we take the lowest 25% of application rates measured, so of all those catchments that we got in the water buckets, we take the lowest 25% of those and we average them out. And then we divide them by the average of all the applied rates measured, so of all those catchments, we take that, that average and divide that by that. And that usually, hopefully we've done our math right, gives us a rating, and the rating, there, there's three buckets for the ratings. There's four, which if you got a DU of 0.75, your DU is considered four. It could be 0.4, it could be 0.8, but it is considered four. And then there's 0.81 and 0.89, and that is good, and then you have excellent, which is anything above 0.9. And so once we've got all that gathered, we put it in together into a report that I think is on one of those tables, and maybe some of you grabbed. And we include details of our evaluation, the numbers, recommendations. Yeah. And then we move into grower D3.
And so it is important to note. That probably 80% of the evaluations that we do are exactly like Lauren described. However, a certain portion of are a lot like our backyard avocado orchards, or the golf, we've done them for like golf courses. And everywhere in between, that's not your like beautiful 200 acre, well-funded grape. And so I feel like the majority of those evaluations are in our district. And so we have, over the years, we've developed kind of. A bunch of kind of alternative ways to look to, to provide a meaningful and relevant evaluation and meaningful results and recommendations to growers. But we have to often go outside of this lovely ITRC program. And we generally, the coastal RCD has an engineer on staff, and so we've utilized that resource a lot. But I think it is important to note that we, we kind of stick to that ITRC protocol, but when the need arises, I think that, again, unbiased, I think that's kind of the beauty of the RCD, is that we, we're kind of generalists. We know about hydrology, we know about soil and erosion. Water dynamics, engineering, throw it at us. And so we're able to, to really meet a grower where they are and figure out their needs and objectives and develop an evaluation that. That and hopefully come up with some meaningful recommendations. And in that same vein, so it's, we're not always comparing apples to apples. We're often comparing grapes to avocados. And so, you know, we have this 15 years of data, it's really hard for us to, to pull out trends because there's such a variation. So rather than looking at like, well, it's hard to pull out trends, I think looking at it in a kind of qualitative way of like, we've done 300 evaluations and been able to provide a breadth of recommendations. To me, that's. Good enough.
Yeah, and, well, you all saw the site map already. As Hallie was saying, so we do provide recommendations. And I'm actually going to go to this next slide, so this is in, yeah, I ended up putting it in there. It's in one of the reports, but I figured it might just be easier to see this. So as she said, sometimes we give recommendations, recommendations that maybe, you know, they're, they're very unique to the landowner, and you wouldn't see time and time again. But then there are times where we do give recommendations that you do see time and time again, and a lot of those are based, again, in the training that we do through the ITRC protocol. They've got kind of this specific suite of recommendations that we can pull from, or at least use to provide us guidance and recommending these growers what they could do. And so some of the typical ones that we see, this was a report that we did, and I felt like it had a lot of the typical recommendations that we will provide, so it's on one of those pages in the report, but. Down here, like adjust uneven spacing of emitters, there are so many times when, I don't know how it happened, but the emitters are just like so unevenly spaced, and there's like one tree that's just, or a few, and a brother that are not getting water. And so that's definitely something we see a lot more frequently than you might think. Admitter orientation is another one. Emitters, if they're not facing down, the water is going to have a hard time going straight down because it's on this plastic lateral line. And so sometimes it's facing sideways, sometimes it's facing upwards, but as you can imagine, it's just, it's like really low pressure water, so it's just like bumping out, and it travels along this plastic line and then drops somewhere that is not on the root stock where it should drop. So that's also another issue that, and again, it could be a really easy fix, but it's, it's timely. Sagging lines, if they sag, the water is going to transfer through that line very differently than if it was straight. That's another typical one, and then remove hose screen washers, so that's a little more technical, but. It's. The pressures could be affected by these things that are in part of the system, and so if we see that's an issue, we can recommend to remove it. And then we'll also usually make some maintenance recommendations, so those are more related to the observations that we see. I'm going to go back. Both these photos, this is very typical for us to see when we're out there. We're walking, and I, I said, I'll usually hear it before I see it, or feel it, because the water's spraying on me. And this is like just a really big hole leak. I don't know how it happened, but it was spraying lots of, and so we, we try and patch it up, but if not, we add that into the, the maintenance recommendation. And here, this, you can see this little drip line that's happening, and that's because the emitter is incorrectly oriented. And so it's, it's not dripping to the, the way that it should be. And, yeah, those are some of the main takeaways, again, the ITRC ones, and then there is some beyond, which.
Yeah, so some of the like non-standard recommendations would be, and they're really based on the priorities of the growers, right? So if the grower, you know, is really interested in, you know, 100% distribution uniformity. But if they're, you know, if they mentioned, well, you know, my emitters are damaged, we're seeing a lot of like predation on the grapes, then we'll recommend maybe like raptor purchase or owl boxings to, you know, to address some like bird or pest pressures or other integrated pest management recommendations to, so we're not just looking at water delivery. Especially after the last two winters, if we're seeing a lot of erosion, rilling that is impacting the irrigation system, we'll recommend, you know, different land management practices, maybe some grading or cover cropping to address the erosion that is affecting the irrigation system. Or. Oh, a big one also is scheduling. Um, or, oh, a big one also is scheduling. Really, really challenging, um, but scheduling, a lot of times, it's not like more water isn't always the answer, especially when there are droughts. Um, so working with the irrigator to talk about, you know, how do you, how do you determine when to turn the water on and when to turn it off? So, they say scheduling is about one of the most important, kind of out of the box recommendations, um, that we made. Um, then then I think the most important recommendation that both of us make is, um, our connection, connecting the dots. Is, um, you know, so great, we just made all these recommendations on how to improve the irrigation system, but how are you going to get it funded? Um, so we, as grant-funded organizations. Um, you know, we know, we have, we partner a lot with the Natural Resource Conservation Service, which is federal. Kind of like our federal, even to our local Yang, um, the NRCL. Um, they fund these programs a lot, um, and then the local, not local, but CDFAs, the Calgary Department of Food and Ed. They also have programs like this, so we're able to make recommendations, but then also recommend how to implement those for how to get funding.
Yeah, and then kind of finally, areas for expansion. I just wanted to include this photo because I thought it was really fun. Um, this was, again, at one of the trainings, and they were teaching us how to do one of these measurements on a sprinkler system. Um, which, my dad's a farmer, and so I called him, he's like, what do you need that for down there? And I was like, okay, well, I just thought it was cool. But anyways, so that, again, just goes to, um, eliminate all the different kind of trainings that we. Or the, the different, uh, irrigation systems that we got to get trained on. Um, but yeah, going forward, there is some opportunity, I think, for us and for this program. One that we've definitely talked about with Brendan and Joshua a little bit, um, but I think could be really valuable is. This audit-like structure, and I don't want to say audit, because that's also not a really fun word, but it it's a similar pattern to it, um, so. Right now, currently, we go out and we do these all evaluations, we do about eight of them, they're usually with a different farmer, every single one. Maybe we get to do the same farmer the next year, but there is no comparison of the farmer's data the previous year. Has it, have they improved, have they implemented the recommendations we offered? Like what's, what's going on with the system is, or it, are the, um, the observations that we're, we're seeing? Do those hold true? And so I think having a system where we, maybe we do four, and then we go back six months later, a year later. Whatever, a great amount of time, and we reevaluate that same farmer. Um, I think this would not only be beneficial to the grower themselves, because it offers. One, another DU test for them that they might most likely need. Um, but two, another evaluation of, hey, here's what your system is doing. Here's, again, where it can still improve, or here's where you're doing great, um, this is what needs fixing. It's kind of like a free consultation, which, I don't know, I think is beneficial, um, especially when you're trying to make money off these things. Um, and then too, it, it provides, I think, some helpful data to the ones who fund this program. Um, I, like we've said already in this presentation, it, it's like comparing apples to oranges. Every site is so unique, I mean, not only with the topography, but the system, some are like fifty years old, some were put in ten years ago. Those themselves have very different processes, um, and so it makes it really hard when you take this data that can be really useful. But you're comparing it, and it's like this experiment that has no consistency, and it makes it hard for a really true answer. Um, and so I think being able to reevaluate each farmer would allow for, uh, some more useful. And and improved data, um, that we could then use for our water efficiency, uh, results and findings.
And so some of the more qualitative, so less, you know, like replicable, um, but, but arguably still important. Qualitative outcomes, um, are like. Or the countywide recognition, like recognition of an RCD, of us and our staffs. Um, over the last fifteen years, because we, we've become this resource for people, they know they can call us, they know we can come out and do these evaluations. For me, in my perspective, that is a really big benefit, um, both to the county, um, and to growers. And then to the RCD too, it really builds up our reputation, um, and trust. Because a lot of what we're able to do and grow in relationships comes from the trust, the relationships that we've built. Um, and then also, just the conversations we've had with the irrigators. Often, not all the time, but sometimes irrigators, you know, they're, they don't know why they turn the water on and turn the water off. They just know that they're supposed to, so by us kind of sharing what we've learned through the different systems and the ITRC. It's like, we're carrying this message and this information forward, um, so they don't need to rely on us to do an evaluation every year. You know, they can use these kind of simple practices to to improve their systems themselves. Yeah, and then a lot, like, we're out there for several hours, so we don't just, we're not just seeing their irrigation system. We're seeing erosion, we're seeing opportunities for like pollinator habitat, some of our other really great, big projects. Some of our other big, great projects have come out of just simple irrigation evaluation, um, so for us, that's really valuable.
And just kind of going off that too, we, we have this scope currently, and it's, it's been great, and I think being able to continue to expand that. Um, will help even more with the irrigation efficiencies that we are trying to discover. Um, and then. Yes, yeah, um, and and like Holly said too, I've been, we, I think one of the first ones we did this year, I was out there, and this guy was like, well. While you're out here, can you come take a look at my pond, um, I've got kind of algae growing and all these issues. And I was like, sure, like that's, we're not out here to do that, but we'll come out here and do that. Um, and so we're still chatting with him about his pond, he's got the irrigation all figured out, um, but the pond is still an issue. Um, but moving into technical training support, this is also always an area for expansion. As I've mentioned a few times, I, I really appreciated the training that we got to do with Paul Polly, I think it was pretty useful. And I think training and education is always helpful, especially in this realm, and currently right now. Um, so there's always room for us to grow and enhance, uh, the practices that we do and the knowledge that we have. And, um, there's, I think there's always an opportunity there for us. And that's it, just a big thank you for having us, and thank you for supporting us in this project. Um, we're happy to take questions, comments, concerns, to see some hands raised. Uh, I think you were first.
Thank you, um, yeah, in your photos, some show of irrigation pond. Uh, are you guys doing any evaluation, uh, I'm, I'm thinking that this pond is mine, but it's not losing water. Uh, there's a pump of water that's filling, unless it's collecting. We have over sixty irrigation ponds in the North County that are uncovered. There's no measurement of the evaporation or the total surface area or anything, which would be greater than what's leaking out of some of those crappy emitters.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think that that, I know that the campfires that they make now are more like. Six-sided or eight-sided floating blocks that hook together, that reduce ninety percent of. Water you just pump from the ground, it's not being measured. So I know all of them over there. In the pass location, they're using ET. But that's just the applied water to the crop, that's not the pumped water to the pond, or the loss in between the pond within the crop.
Yeah. Yeah, and we, we could definitely chat and and add that as a recommendation covering a pond. Yeah, I was gonna say, you should, you should email me, um, we're always looking for ways to revise, um, and. Though we're not out there to evaluate the pond, I'm sure all the growers that we work with are very amicable. And so I think that if we were to suggest something like that, they would take it very nicely, and they would probably respond to it. Um, there is a program that I think was just awarded, the Miller Program, and was that what you're referencing, the ET?
Uh, Miller is a following.
Okay, well, so I'm, I'm not super familiar, but I I thought that there was going to be some ET, um, measurement in that as well, um, within the patto.
I'm, I'm, I'm always amazed that, uh, the following program, they're telling, the state's telling people to flood farmland or recharge. Uh, how are you gonna get the recharge if you follow, and why do we get workforce housing if you're getting rid of farming?
Yeah, well, anyways, e- email me with your ideas. And, uh, I'd be happy to chat about that. You, in the very back.
Oh, you mentioned your board of directors, is your board of directors, uh, what kind of things, land on the, or are you, who are your board of directors?
They're approved by the board of directors. Board supervisors, sorry, yes. So they're like, hopefully identified, um, and then they'll go to the board of supervisors.
So typically, are they candidates, we have an interest in your programs, or?
And we, and we currently have opening.
I was gonna say, we both have openings, so if you're interested. Um, I, wait, did you have another question, though?
Um, though, if you, if you do, depending on where you're located, if you want to mail either, let's be continued in touch with.
And they may have an interest in our programs, but normally it's not for their own self-use, it's just to support, um, us and the programs that we are advocating for. And administering.
I was reading a while ago that the, I, I, USDS, I, USD, I'm not quite sure who. Was, uh, going in making available multi-spectral satellite, uh, data on, uh, both, uh, the. Chlorophyll content of leaves and soil moisture and things like that, and what, what, it's multi-spectral, so I can tell what spectrum they're using. And I don't, because that's, uh, they said I've come online, because it'd be great if you're going to be looking at a project. To look at the spectral information, which would show you there were deficits, for example, in, in chlorophyll. Or something like that, or whatever they're looking at, so you look, you see it in photos, whether it's an issue.
Yeah, we, I, I'm unfamiliar with that.
I've not come through either, okay.
But, um, the, both of our districts are currently, um, funded through the CDFW veg camp. Program, um, to, to complete fine-scale vegetation mapping, so on the alliance level of, um, all of Slow County. And Monterey and Zambini County, um, and so that imagery will be, um, it'll be publicly available. But it'll be a resource that, I mean, I can't think of any of our projects that won't use that imagery, um, so that'll be a good tool.
Thank you. I guess there are, there are CD conservation projects all over, do most of them have a similar relationship with the, with the county? Where they have funding directly from the county? And do they do similar sorts of things, or they do some of the things you're talking about, don't they, or is it less, or has a role of, but would you say we did it then?
Yeah, I'd say yes, um, it's really, that's a tough thing. I hate to say that it's a tough question to answer, because, but, but each RCD is so unique. And it's defined by the needs of its, of its community, and so if you were to look. I know up in the Bay Area, like in the East Bay, you probably wouldn't see a lot of your mobile irrigation labs. You'd see a lot more like restoration, wildlife management, uh, watershed. Mm-hmm, education, anything like urban ag, you would see, um, but you would probably find more differences in our programs. But there are other, um, like Katuma RCD and Ventura RCD, you, you'd see a lot of similarity between us.
Some of the Bay Area RCDs, um, they actually have these really great, um, permitting, like streamlined and comprehensive permitting programs. Within partnership at the county, um, where the RCDs kind of take on a portion of the restoration projects, the RCD would be the prominent term. I think so, person who issues the reviews, permission, reviews projects, and issues permits, um, which is pretty cool.
But our, our RCDs aren't funded by the county, it's just particular project by project.
Correct, yeah.
But some RCDs do get a tax base, like for instance, in Santa Barbara County, however many years ago, the county issued. Or approved a certain percentage of a sales tax, and that tax is, uh, the baseline funding for that RCD. And maybe some other things, that mostly goes to the RCD, which would be great.
Show earlier questions from folks online.
There's one question over there.
So, so I understand, I, I think it's a great program, and you say it's been going on annually. Is it continuing, or are you saying, hey?
We hope it's continuing.
Yeah, I think it's continuing, and we hope it's continuing.
Same answer.
Yeah, so ea- each year, are you providing them like a, like a long-term, this kind of outcome? Or is it just the shorter, like, hey, fix? Fix my irrigation.
Uh, so we, um, I think we, like, we bring up at the budget review, but we, um, every three years. At least, they're looking back, going back now, what?
Fifteen.
Fifteen plus years, um, we have three-year contracts, um, and funding, um, designated. For each RCD to do a certain number of, up to a certain number of evaluations a year. And yet, and then every three years, we, we renew that, yeah, sounds cool, yeah.
Question, so in the past, then five, six years now, the Katuma RCD would come up and do irrigation audits for parks. And it's asked the arrow, and, uh, and school districts, they would do them, and I understood that that became a conflict. And I'm wondering, when you guys talk about funding, uh, some of that landscape, auditing could be brought back in. And offered, and like, if the, of our fairness.
Yeah, I'm sure it could, yeah. Um, yeah, we, we're, you know, we have our district, so that would definitely be an issue of Katuma. I could see how that was an issue, um, but I think that we could totally do that, again, it would, it would come down to a funding aspect. Because we have a set amount of funding right now that goes to certain growers, but, um, yeah, I think that that would definitely be an option, I don't see why not.
If growers weren't about me, how do they find me? Word of mouth?
Yeah, word of mouth, social media, we try and put, sometimes we've done the whole flyer thing, put them in local stores. Um, uh, on our website is a good resource, hopefully, if people would.
Yeah, and we, um, you know, we do outreach through the Farm Bureau, um, cattle maintenance sometimes.
And then Michael will send out emails too, like a big email blast, um, with flyers or. Throughout the, I'd say, the RCD community, hey, if you have a grower board, or, you know, a list of contacts that you could send this to, please share it. So we try and do that.
I have one more question, you were talking about, so you go out and conduct these assessments, irrigation assessments, you're doing quite a lot of. Uh, drip irrigation, so if you want to add in a follow-up, do you have to change your. I don't know the word, charter or whatever, since you're not really going year to year, and reporting, you know, follow-up years. So you could wrap out, how, you know, coming up and, uh, getting it added in, what is the next step?
Like another follow-up, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, compliance, like some sort of, we're, we're working out grant money for work we don't know is going to be completed. And we don't really know if we're making improvements, you know, situation was for some sort of reporting.
I was gonna say, that's a conversation that we've been having with Brendan and Joshua. Sorry, that's a conversation we've been having with Brendan and Joshua about this next iteration of her, um, contract is to modify the scope. To include that kind of qualitative, quantitative metric.
Yeah, and that's why, why I said an audit-like structure would be great, because, yeah, right now, I mean, I can go out and talk to them. Or see them the following year, hey, how's everything going, how were the recommendations that we made? And they can tell me about it, but I don't have any quantitative qualitative data that I have seeked out myself. And so we could restructure it where we only do four evaluations and we reevaluate those same four.
My question is, how are you gonna make this happen? Like, how does this kind of come about, really push that, people, and modification?
Yeah, I, I think it's pretty simple, it's, it's, we're doing the same evaluation that we, that we always do.
Make that decision and then go do it, or do you have, you have to have approval from someone, correct?
You, you need it required.
Yeah, that's my question, really.
Well, I think if it was a requirement for the program, that would probably be set by the, the program administrators.
Um, as, as far as like it being a caveat of like, getting about, like, if you, you're agreeing by getting this evaluation. That you will implement the recommendation and allow us to come in and do a follow-up evaluation. Um, that might be a little bit more tricky, because we're not really like a, uh, entity with teeth. Uh, but, but like Lauren said, the, and we're like, we have really great relationships with the people that we do evaluations for. So.
It's more of relating to where you're volunteering.
Yeah, um, or I think they would be open to that too, but we would just have to consider, you know, what is all the work that we are going to commit them to? Because this is grant-funded for us, but for a farmer or a grower, they don't necessarily want someone to come out there, tell them everything that they have to do. And what if we create this huge list for them and they're like, I don't have the time this year, like, where, I don't have the funds. And so I think it would be, we, it would just be something that we'd have to discuss, of how do we still have them commit to this new standard? And, but what does that commitment look like? Because I do also think, though, that they would, they would like to do that because it would provide them this data that would be really helpful going forward. And hey, if I make these changes, then we get to reassess, like, were those changes actually beneficial? Because right now, I, I don't really know if I want to make those changes because there's nothing that's gonna come out and test if they were good or bad. So there's two sides to that coin, and I think that there's, there's something that could, could make it work and could make it make sense. I don't know if that answers your question.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Hallie and Lauren.
Well, Hannah's back over.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And before we go on, and next time, I realized I did not ask Joey to introduce the people who were, joined us online today. I apologize for not including them from the beginning.
Okay, would you like me to?
Yes.
Okay, great. So let's see here. So for the folks that are joining us online, I will briefly just read off who's in attendance. And please feel free to introduce yourself, because I call your names. So let's see here, starting off with Alejandra Cilio.
Thanks, Joy. My name's Alejandra. I'm a water resource engineer with the Water Resources Division at Soul County Public Works.
Thanks, Alejandra. Nate Page.
Hello, Nate Page with Confluence Engineering. Good afternoon.
Thanks, Nate. Jeff Edwards.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Jeff Edwards. I'm in the private sector in, from Los Osos.
Thanks, Jeff. Jenny Williamson.
Jenny Williamson, County Public Works.
Jenny, Toby Moore.
Yes, good afternoon. Toby Moore, Water Resources Manager with Golden State Water Company.
Toby, Jason Yeager.
Yes, this is Jason Yeager. I'm the principal at Farm Passa Robles, and I'm an egg at large alternate.
Thanks, Jason. Deborah Logan.
Uh, good afternoon, Deborah Logan, TCSD, and I apologize, we'll have to drop off this call at 2:30.
Thanks, Deborah. Tim Kershaw.
Hi, all. Tim Kershaw, Cleese Harris Geologist.
Thanks, Tim. Courtney Howard.
Courtney Howard, Water Resources Division Manager at Soul County Public Works.
Thanks, Courtney. Mark Zimmer. Um, let's move on. Kate Valentine.
Yeah, this is Kate Valentine, Deputy Director for Slow County Public Works.
Thanks, Kate. Carolyn Berg.
Hi, Carolyn Berg, couple collaborative and just interested listener.
Thanks, Carolyn. And last I have on my list here is Patricia Wilmore. Or did we, did we get to Patricia yet? Let's see.
Yeah, I'm here. Patricia Wilmore, Past Robles Wine Country Alliance, Egg at Large Alternate.
Right, thank you, Patricia.
Right, thank you, Joey. Um, so we'll move on then to item number four, which is receive updates from CSDs. And Deborah, we'll ask you to go first, since you've got a time constraint.
Thank you so much. So one of the things I just wanted to share with the group is a project that the Templeton CSD completed in 2018. And this is one where on the east side of Templeton, and that's east of the 101 freeway, the wastewater was actually sent to Paso Robles and was treated there. And it was Paso Robles was then able to retrieve that water later. So in, the project actually started in 2016 and was completed in 2018. And what we've done is we've taken the east side wastewater and are now sending it to the Templeton Metal Brook Wastewater Treatment Plant for treatment discharge and subsequent retrieval of the water from the district's wells downstream. And this is huge because up until this point in time, Templeton had a water waitlist and there had not been any water units, new water units issued in over 20 years. So this project has now been able to allow us to issue new water units. And it's slow, but in the last three years, we've been able to release new water units. And this past year, we were able to release 145 water units. And it's also worth noting that in 2016, the district established what we call a water buffer policy. And we have a model that is reviewed by the Board of Directors each February. And this policy is to maintain a 20% reserve or buffer to ensure that the district's water supply is reliable and there's redundancy for current and future district residents and customers. So the district board of staff is updating the model annually, and then the Board of Directors is reviewing it. And based on that review determines how many new water units the district is able to release for that current year. So that's my update that I thought would be relevant to this particular group.
Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you, Deborah. I think we give you questions.
Sure.
Well, just a quick question. What is a water unit? Is that a residential household or?
Yeah, the water unit is a household. We look at it in terms of commercial use and residential. So it's the unit of water that we're able to release for household or residential property.
So is that similar to like an equivalency dwelling unit?
Pardon me?
Is that similar to an EDU or an equivalency dwelling unit?
An ADU is an accessory dwelling unit. So a water unit is how much water is for a particular piece of property, be it residential or commercial.
It's like a little bar.
Thanks, Deborah.
Jump back up to Avalon. I believe so. Okay, so, so then Cambry.
Great, thanks, yeah. I'll keep a brief, I know we're running world upon. I can begin some of our completed projects, we completed back in August, our lead and copper inventory line, so that's made the meter, and then from meter into the influence into the house, that's completed online for being for the community. We also completed our quintennial, so every five years, Division Drinking Water likes a watershed sanitary survey that was completed by Confluence Engineering and John Tyler on this group, did a wonderful job on that. So anybody has that document coming up on their docket, to advocate, to look out to Dan and this group of Confluence to help out with that. Also, we have our rodeo grounds generators in the heart of our system. It's 126 KDA, and we're doing a replacement on that. We're proposing with ABCD for that replacement. We've also begun our advanced metering infrastructure replacement. We're doing the initial installation in house. And we've just flown an RFP for contractors to assist with that installation on that piece as well. We're also working on just short of a mile-long wastewater line, treated affluent and domestic water transmission line that goes through Caltrans and State Parks. And State Parks there is enhanced nature preserve, so obviously we're trying to stay out of that and work with Caltrans on a red entry there for installation there. We're also replacing two domestic water storage tanks at our Stewart Street location. We released a CDP for that earlier. We expect to get some response back from that, if there's any information holes there this month. And we reported breaking ground on that in spring of 2025. We've also done some engineering on our lift station B4 on our Green Street, and we're just breaking ground on that next year. And then, of course, we have our Solid Solutions Turnkey Program with PGME, and that is ECM, so energy conservation models, modules for obviously enhancing our treatment process and using less energy to do that. So those are some of our big pipeline projects we have in the works right now.
Sounds like a lot going on, a lot going on. Very good. Any questions for Cambry? Why Heritage Ranch?
I think Napomo.
Napomo or Los Osos? Napomo.
Yes, Napomo, there's four projects I'll touch on. First one is the AMR upgrade. Half of our meters are AMR ready now. The other ones will be done in a year or two. All new meters are AMR meters, and the Dana Reserve project, which will be 1,300, 1,400 dwelling units. That will have all new AMR meters when it gets built. As far as the Black Lake Sewer goes, we're joining the Black Lake Sewer Plan with the Southland Sewer Plan. This reduces the Black Lake build, sewer build by about 50%. It's, the pipeline is in the horse main, it's less than five miles along the horse main is in. And we're now constructing the lift station, which is a final phase of it. The other part we're doing is the intersections between, or supplemental water between Army Line and Woodlands Mutual Water Company and Golden State. That should be ready for water delivery for July of 25. The biggie is the Dana Reserve Annexation, which is essentially out of our hands right now. It goes to LACCO next Thursday for the final hearing. That'll be the biggest annexation we've ever seen in mid-year to county. There'll be 1,300, 1,400 dwelling units. Like I said, that'll be heard next Thursday at LACCO, it's 14.
Thank you. Any questions for Napomo?
What meter vendor is she is?
What meter vendor is she is?
Can't tell you that. Somebody can, but I can't.
I don't think San Miguel or Sensinian is here.
Ocean?
Oh, yeah.
Oceano, San Miguel or Sensinian?
Brief update for Oceano.
Yes.
Yeah, so we have a large PIP list, about 29 projects along. First five haven't been built, and the next five, I don't know, in the middle shot, seven projects, and getting those full design by the end of the year. Got a little bit of separation, branch funds, and both mean of water rates, there are five hundred water rates. So we can get a whole water rate study. And then we have three significant consolidation projects that are being moved by the board for some mobile parks in, used in that area, as well as the Halsey area. So those are moving forward, so we can bring it against the local customers. Improving the waterfall.
So you're essentially gonna take over the water systems in the mobile home parks, is that?
For three parks, as well as moving the Halsey area.
Any questions for Oceano? Eric.
Yeah, what is your reading on the status of Central Coast Blue? Is it dead? Is it on hiatus? Is it being rethought? Where, where is it? And what is the position of your CSD relative to this time?
I don't know if the CSD has any position, but where it's at right now is Pismo has created a new JPA with AG over falling out. And so there is an existing JPA that exists almost entirely Pismo. And Pismo is attempting to keep the product alive. For, you know, future funding, opportunities to hold up the grant money to have and develop a whole site of water facility from their own.
Thank you.
Great.
I know that there's no way here from San Miguel, like, what are their meetings, right? Mr. Powell, who we speak there quite often. They have one more meeting, and three of their members are gonna be replaced by three other members, so they're gonna have a whole board and be sending somebody new here, most likely. And a project that they haven't voted on yet, which might come up at this next meeting, or might be till the new board is put in in December, is a 200 acre foot roughly is what they produce of their treated wastewater. So this, this thing was supposed to be supposedly built four and a half years ago and almost completed, and it just now basically got it in design. They got a million dollars of grant money, but they've already spent $250,000 on the design. And the project is 300,000, more than a million. And they don't have any contracts with the two vendors that they're supposedly gonna buy, because they don't even know what the water stem costs. That's what they're working on.
Okay, well, hopefully the new reps will keep us posted. Any other questions? All right, thank you, all the CSDs, I hope, for your participation, the information. I hope everybody found it useful. I searched you.
Yeah, I presume the Sensinian issues are now county issues.
I have no insight into the issue, Brendan.
I believe that's with LACCO. And that's, there's, it's between LACCO and the, the CSD right now. I don't think there's anything official any, otherwise.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on then to item number five, process review of the draft policy on state water projects.
Yeah, it's just a quick update. We talked about this last month, and the, what I gathered from the committee was, would appreciate a longer review time. And the consensus in the group was being able to submit individual comments to county staff and have those compiled and, you know, responded to when staff comes back for the presentation in December. So with the sending out this agenda packet, it opens a two-week comment period. If you want to get, get your comment responded to and addressed, obviously, you can continue to send comments or bring new questions when we meet in December. But if, for actually submitting individual comments to, we get compiled by, you know, Wes and, and I, I guess you could send them to me. Please submit that by, I think it's next Friday, November 15th. And we'll get those in. And then, yeah, we're, we're planning for the December meeting. We'll have a nice, long presentation about the policy, and Wes will be here and be able to answer all your questions. So I can answer questions about process to the best of my abilities, but I won't take any questions on the actual policy, because it's not my, not my thing, so.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Comments or thoughts, get them through Wes or Brendan by.
I guess in the package, there's a fight to stop 2003. Are those the old policies?
Yes, yes. There, I answered a question. I'm just kidding. I knew that one.
Any other questions for Brendan?
Greg's got one.
Not a question, but a comment about the use of the, of the state water. So obviously, for the first 35 years, we engaged, that's a western postal branch. And then the postal branch got purchased with subcontractors who wanted to be in, decided to zee in. And they paid for twice the water that they, they put in the pipe, so they have a proper. But the other 15,000 acre feet roughly has been paid for by the rest of the taxpayers. And And, uh, because of the, uh, Grand Jury report that was done here a few years back, that, uh, any use of that water has to be, um, paid for. You can put it in the right, right account. So like the two water sales that took place and previous water sales that took place. This includes exchanges and transfers also. So I would be wondering if there's going to be anything in the policy for people that want, that think they want to use some state water that just when it gets to the turnout, at Shannon is $2,500 acre foot. Uh, and, uh, the county being the water district for Shannon hasn't used it for five years. So they've been pumping groundwater, using it to the houses, putting it in the septic system, which is a state, uh, approved recharge facility. So they've been putting back what they've been taking, but if they would use 100 acre feet of state water, they would have saved 100 acre feet in ground and they would have recharged 100 acre feet that they wouldn't have had. So it would have been a 200 acre foot positive instead of a zero. So I think some of that information would, would benefit on when we're talking about what we want to reduce station to the basin of what we have available to use and, and it's not being, uh, put to beneficial use. Thanks for those thoughts, Greg. Yes, Eric.
I have a quick process question. Uh, is this, I mean, how do you, uh, it makes its, you know, basically signs its name on the dotted line. Is it simply between the county and the Department of Water Resources? Or does the Central Coast Water Authority have an ore in the water?
Uh, a question for Wes?
That's one of those. I think I know, but I'm not going to go put it out there. Uh, so I think that's a great question for Wes and you'd be, you're free to email him or, um, I could tell you what I think after and then you could email him. So.
I can, I can put it in writing. Basically, I'm interested in whether, once the supervisor makes a decision, does it subsequent, they go to rehearing in, in front of the Central Coast Water Authority before if D R W R signs off on it or whatever. That's, I won't, I won't push it here.
It's a great question for December. And just, I, I think I know, but I'm not going to put it out there. Not confident enough. So.
Anything else on the state water policy? Now, we'll move on to ongoing updates. First one is rain and reservoir. Questions or comments?
I, I.
Yes.
It is probably too early to get November on here. But I actually, uh, this last weekend have a 10, 10 hundreds of an inch in November. It's not quite going to get us up to what El Nio would suggest, that's starting earlier. But yes, I have came in softly, didn't really hear, but the gutters were training again. The rain day showed 10, 100ths of an inch. We have a chance of maybe getting 20 hundreds around 20. I know the Navy, it's, it's on the storm track, you will be more generous than the inside sliders. Some of the models are saying.
We'll see. Every little bit helps. Anything on the draft updates? On groundwater basin management efforts? Flood control zone? I don't know if say something on groundwater efforts. Yes, right. So, uh, we were supposed to have a groundwater meeting here a few weeks back. That got canceled, I guess, and be sometimes after things there in this year. For the castle basin. Now, all the, all, all the efforts that have been, that are being done right now, we're at the 10 year anniversary of the State Water Penning Act. And not one project has been started or completed other than studies. Uh, the county approved another 300,000 for another study on the state waters of dumping. If I got six studies in here that have already been done on the same thing, why would we spend another $300,000? Because it's grand on the cost of funding, same as that. Those deals money's left. Is unbelievable to me. And the main projects that could be done where you could see 100% effort right away is the full use of the Nazi mental water instead of pumping, but the Nazi mental water has a broken line again. I think he's been broken fixed six or seven times. I don't know what the actual shutdown is from when it started and what's actually been able to be retrieved. It also has a capacity loss of 3,909 acre feet because all the repairs that were done were temporary repairs, putting in the pipe, entitled pipe to make the capacity less. So, and they're looking at blended water. There's no stormwater capture. The last two years, the stormwater capture could have had so much extra water, but all the wells went up in, in our basin for the status. So, uh, the projects are being identified that only, uh, help specific uh, groups and not the base. And it's supposed to be the Sustainability Basin Act, not the Sustainability Wine Cores Act. So all those are my comments. Thank you, Greg. Uh, flood control zones, integrated regional water, water management. Master water report updates. State water projects. DSA. Various other county water programs, policies or ordinances.
One on, on that last category, um, consent item 13 on next Tuesday supervisor's agenda is a report on the flood damage to our county park system of 2023 and the efforts that have been made to repair that damage.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Last is open reporting on water conservation opportunities and information. Move on to future agenda items. Anybody have any future agenda items to add? That's time.
I spoke to a staff person at the Central Coast Water Board about the water board's well testing program. And, uh, was interested in knowing whether they get enough exposure and enough, you know, attention. And if they might be interested in a presentation here, they, they, that they would be interested in that sometime this spring. So I can keep in touch with them, but that's one possibility. It's the, it's the Regional Water Quality Control Board's well testing program throughout the Central Coast region. And this spring is when they're moving it kind of into our county area. They've been working at Butterford. Uh, Central Coast region. So if it's kind of timely, timely time to have the.
So add that to the list and keep us posted. Yeah. Yeah, I, I would be very interested in, in, uh, does a great suggestion. Okay. Because they're collecting a serious amount of money and, you know, especially from over the passo basin, uh, it could be put to better use. So I'd be very interested in that. Okay, alright. We'll see if we get them here in spring.
An action item or just a report to us?
Well, I, I think I should clarify it's drinking water wells, not irrigation.
Oh, not irrigation wells.
Might be thinking of something else.
Terms of. I would second irrigation wells and, and domestic. We also are testing for domestic water wells also. Irrigation wells do use wells and. And that's the regional water control board? Yes. Well, we'll see if we can get a, uh, presentation. Yes, Andy.
Wait, which reminds me, I think in general that the regional water control board would be, we would all be well served and have more, uh, ongoing communication and, uh, maybe that would be an opportunity for them to, and reintroduce how they worked in this county and who's our contact points.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll put them on the list for updates on their projects and programs. Yeah.
Cause James Bishop has moved on, Rachel Holmes, David Mills. So I think it's, I need to just sort of group.
Yeah.
I scored a last. H O H N, H O H N. Okay. All right. Good suggestion. Uh, any other new items, new agenda items? Okay. If not, then public comment for items not on the agenda. None, then we will adjourn. Have a good Thanksgiving, everybody. And we'll see when early December.